Ladies and gentlemen, good evening, everyone. This is regular city council meeting, Tuesday, June 4th. Call the meeting in order. Madam Clerk, may I have your call, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Here.
Councilmember Papino.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Mayor Sandu.
Here. Next agenda item is, please join us silent prayer and flag salute.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Capitol, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next agenda item, replay statement. Madam Clerk.
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting is closed caption and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting replays Saturday, June 8th at 9:00 a.m. and Sunday, June 9th at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/metrolcable14.
Thank you. Next agenda item, B, council agenda approval addition or deletion. If it is none, then next agenda item, C, presentation. We have two presentations. First presentation Sacramento Yola mosquito and vector control district annual report. Thank you. It was given by Luz Maria Robles, Public Information Officer. Thank you.
My name is Luz Maria Robles. I am the district's Public Information Officer, and today it's my great pleasure to be able to give you guys an update with what we can expect from mosquitoes. Who here has already been bitten by mosquitoes? It's already June. I think most of us have already been bitten once or twice, so today I want to give you guys a recap of what we saw last year and what we can expect this year. So hopefully, as we kind of head into the summer months, you guys can all stay protected from mosquitoes. So with that, let's go ahead and get started. Perfect, okay. So as you know, we are the local district charged with protecting residents against mosquitoes and West Nile virus. We operate under the California Health and Safety Code, and our main mission is to make sure that people will be able to go outside, enjoy the outdoors without being bitten by mosquitoes and being exposed to threats such as West Nile virus and other diseases. So in order to help protect residents, we utilize what we call an integrated mosquito management approach, which includes a variety of elements. So first of all, public information and education. I'm the communications manager for the district, so I'm in charge of doing all the presentations. We go to a lot of events. We have an extensive fight the bite advertising campaign that basically aims at educating residents on how they can protect themselves against mosquitoes. So we encourage people to drain stagnant water to make sure that they're protecting themselves with a good repellent. And we also have an extensive surveillance program. So our lab, they are in charge of monitoring and tracking West Nile virus activities. So our laboratory sets traps, we collect mosquitoes, we test them, and if they test positive for West Nile virus, then we're able to respond. But based on all the work that they do, then we're able to respond accordingly by doing spraying as part of our control operations. But we also have our biological control program, so mosquito fish help us control mosquitoes naturally. We give them free to people who have a pond, a fountain, a horse trough. We put them in rice fields, creeks. Anything that holds water is a good home for these fish because each one can eat between 200 to 300 mosquito larvae per day, so they're very efficient for us. Our ecological management team, we have lots of heavy equipment and machinery, so that department, they basically work with landowners to make sure that they're not producing mosquitoes on their property. And again, our control operations team, they're like our boots on the ground. They're the ones that go out and conduct the free home service inspections based on whatever our laboratory finds. So if somebody needs, if somebody has a lot of mosquitoes at their home, they can request a free home service inspection, and most of our, so they will go out and do that along with any mosquito control treatments such as spraying wherever West Nile virus is detected. So again, we control mosquitoes using this integrated mosquito management approach. So as you know, mosquitoes come from lots of different places. There's many different types of mosquito breeding habitats. There's a lot of agricultural areas, there's a lot of creeks, a lot of streams, and we know where all those are, but actually the sources that we're most concerned about are the very small sources in people's backyards. So a dog dish, a bucket, a plant saucer, anything that can hold water can and will become a mosquito breeding source. So we always say that mosquito control is a collaborative effort between homeowners and our district because that's why we're always encouraging people to do their part and drain sources of stagnant water around their home because that's what's going to help us the most. So, you know, we encourage people to at least once a week, look around their yard and drain any of those sources of stagnant water that can produce mosquitoes. Neglected pools are a big problem for us. A one neglected pool can actually produce about a million mosquitoes over the course of a summer. So again, reducing those mosquito breeding habitats is key. All right, so could 2024 be another intense mosquito season? Yes, based on what we're seeing now, it's been really hot, we're already seeing lots of mosquito virus activity. Last year, we had a significant amount of rain that led to lots of stagnant water with many mosquito breeding sources. We saw a very sharp increase in the levels of West Nile virus activity throughout the state, and, you know, experts such as our lab director and others at our district think that we have concern for another long season ahead. Right now, we're just kind of starting out. Typically, West Nile virus season peaks during the hot summer months of July and August, so we're just kind of going into, we're heading into those months. So West Nile virus activity last year in Galt, we actually only saw a very small amount of activity with three mosquito samples testing positive for West Nile virus, two dead birds, so not lots to report in Galt, unfortunately. However, I do want to highlight those human cases of West Nile virus. So last year in Sacramento County, as you can see, we saw 53 human cases of West Nile virus, 39 in Yola County. We also had a few fatalities, but you can see just those numbers, that's a very sharp increase from last year in '22, or even, you know, any of the other previous years. So we did have lots of West Nile virus activity in Sacramento County. Luckily, in Galt, we didn't see anything, and this year, it's still very early, we haven't found anything yet in Galt or anywhere else. But you can see also, in terms of West Nile virus activity in California, we had 428 human cases of West Nile virus, including 19 fatalities. And then also, for every reported case, the CDC estimates that there's 30 to 70 cases that go unreported. So we know that 428 number is likely a lot higher, just based on figures from the CDC. All right, detection of invasive mosquitoes, so that's our newest threat. I know that to most people, a mosquito is a mosquito, and all you want to do is kill it, but mosquitoes, so the mosquitoes that transmit West Nile virus are different than these two new invasive mosquito species that we have. So these are actually invasive, as their name indicates. So there's two mosquitoes that basically came to California in 2011, and we found them for the first time in our region in 2019. So far, luckily, no detections in Galt, but these are the two species of mosquitoes that can transmit Dengue, Zika, Chikungunya, diseases that we see every year that are travel-related. But actually, last year, for the first time ever, there was local transmission of Dengue in Southern California. Of course, the risk is that with these mosquitoes rapidly spreading within our district, that we would have locally acquired cases of these diseases within our 200 to 300 mosquito larvae per day, so they're very efficient for us. Our ecological management team, we have lots of heavy equipment and machinery, so that department, they basically work with landowners to make sure that they're not producing mosquitoes on their property. And again, our control operations team, they're like our boots on the ground. They're the ones that go out and conduct the free home service inspections based on whatever our laboratory finds. So if somebody needs, if somebody has a lot of mosquitoes at their home, they can request a free home service inspection, and most of our, so they will go out and do that along with any mosquito controlled treatments such as spraying wherever West Nile virus is detected. So again, we control mosquitoes using this integrated mosquito management approach. So as you know, mosquitoes come from lots of different places. There's many different types of mosquito breeding habitats. There's a lot of agricultural areas, there's a lot of creeks, a lot of streams, and we know where all those are, but actually the sources that we're most concerned about are the very small sources in people's backyards. So a dog dish, a bucket, a plant saucer, anything that can hold water can and will become a mosquito breeding source. So we always say that mosquito control is a collaborative effort between homeowners and our district, because that's why we're always encouraging people to do their part and drain sources of stagnant water around their home, because that's what's going to help us the most. So, you know, we encourage people to at least once a week, look around their yard and drain any of those sources of stagnant water that can produce mosquitoes. Neglected pools are a big problem for us. A one neglected pool can actually produce about a million mosquitoes over the course of a summer. So again, reducing those mosquito breeding habitats is key. All right, so could 2024 be another intense mosquito season? Yes, based on what we're seeing now, it's been really hot, we're already seeing lots of mosquito virus activity. Last year, we had a significant amount of rain that led to lots of stagnant water with many mosquito breeding sources. We saw a very sharp increase in the levels of West Nile virus activity throughout the state, and you know, experts such as our lab director and others at our district think that we have concern for another long season ahead. Right now, we're just kind of starting out. Typically, West Nile virus season peaks during the hot summer months of July and August, so we're just kind of going into, we're heading into those months. So West Nile virus activity last year in Galt, we actually only saw a very small amount of activity with three mosquito samples testing positive for West Nile virus, two dead birds, so not lots to report in Galt, unfortunately. However, I do want to highlight those human cases of West Nile virus. So last year in Sacramento County, as you can see, we saw 53 human cases of West Nile virus, 39 in Yola County. We also had a few fatalities, but you can see just those numbers, that's a very sharp increase from last year in '22, or even, you know, any of the other previous years. So we did have lots of West Nile virus activity in Sacramento County. Luckily, in Galt, we didn't see anything, and this year, it's still very early, we haven't found anything yet in Galt or anywhere else. But you can see also, in terms of West Nile virus activity in California, we had 428 human cases of West Nile virus, including 19 fatalities. And then also, for every reported case, the CDC estimates that there's 30 to 70 cases that go unreported. So we know that 428 number is likely a lot higher, just based on figures from the CDC. All right, detection of invasive mosquitoes, so that's our newest threat. I know that to most people, a mosquito is a mosquito, and all you want to do is kill it, but mosquitoes, so the mosquitoes that transmit West Nile virus are different than these two new invasive mosquito species that we have. So these are actually invasive, as their name indicates. So there's two mosquitoes that basically came to California in 2011, and we found them for the first time in our region in 2019. So far, luckily, no detections in Galt, but these are the two species of mosquitoes that can transmit Dengue, Zika, chikungunya, diseases that we see every year that are travel-related. But actually, last year, for the first time ever, there was local transmission of Dengue in Southern California. Of course, the risk is that with these mosquitoes rapidly spreading within our district, that we would have locally acquired cases of these diseases within our district. So as I said, we don't have any in Galt, thankfully, but we do have very big infestations of these two mosquitoes in other parts of the county. Our biggest infestation areas are Arden Arcade, the Rosemont area of Sacramento County, and you can see that we have found both species. Initially, when we first detected them, we only found 80s of Dipti, but now we actually have both species. These are aggressive day biting mosquitoes. Typically, our native mosquitoes would bite mainly at dawn and dusk. These actually can bite all day long. They do prefer to bite people. They can breed in as little as a teaspoon of water, and once they're established in any given area, they're extremely difficult to eradicate, because they can breed in very small amounts of water. So this is our newest threat with regards to mosquitoes in our area. So with that, I hope that you guys can take proper precautions as we head into the summer months. I do want to mention that our district does offer free mosquito repellent wipes, so for any of the city activities that you might be having. We were just at the Galt City Market with our educational booth. I'm also happy to do presentations to any service organizations that you might think of, or we're happy to partner in any ways, just to make sure that residents are getting the message of staying protected against mosquitoes and any of the diseases that they may carry.
Thank you. Council, any comment, any question? Very quick.
Yeah, I have just a quick question. Thank you for the presentation. I always find these interesting, because, you know, it affects everybody. What do you guys, as, you know, this is your field, you're experts, what do you think the reason for the sharp increase? I mean, that's a huge increase.
Yeah. So last year, the sharp increase, I mean, it definitely was due to the amount of rain that we received, so last year was an extremely wet year. Also, last year, within both of our two counties, especially Yola County, we had a sharp increase in the amount of agglans, specifically rice that were planted, more than double the acreage of rice. So the mosquitoes that breed in rice are also the ones that transmit West Nile virus. So those are the two main factors, aside from just it was a very hot season. So I think between those three things, that's what contributed to the sharp increase.
All right, makes sense. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anybody else? If it is not, thank you, Ms. Robles, gave us all this information for us. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, and then I do want to, one more thing. I apologize. We have our board member, Marcia Muny. The city appoints Marcia, so she's our board member, does a great job. She was our board president last year, but thank you for appointing her, and she does a great job representing the city, and she was here tonight to watch this presentation.
Thank you. Thank you. The next presentation, Earth Day Compost Project Report, Lisa Klautz. Thank you, Lisa.
So, hello, and my name is Lisa Klautz. I am now the Director of Education and Engagement for Cal Waste Recycling Recovery Systems. So anyway, I want to thank, I'm here tonight to thank you for your partnership in a very important project that we worked on together. It was an Earth Day compost project, and the city of Galt, the high school district, the elementary school district, Cal Waste, and the local Galt Sunrise Rotary all partnered together to create this project. It all started, oh, I have to do the thing, don't I? There we go. It all started in a conversation that I had with Laura and Robin at Public Works. They had dropped by Cal Waste and were asking some questions about the ever famous Senate Bill 1383. We all know that one, separate your food waste from your trash. And we were talking about how we approached this in our schools, and I was describing the school food waste recycling program that we do in all schools that we have as customers, but primarily in Galt. And we call it the Healthy Planet, Healthy You. And what we do in these assemblies is we explain what it is, food waste recycling, why we do it, it's good for the environment, and, well, it's the law, how to do it quickly and easily, and what in the world happens to it afterwards? That's something a lot of people forget. And so we have presented this to over 3,000 students within our school district, and through this conversation, we start to talk about how much food that we actually throw away. Oh, this is a healthy problem. How much we throw away? We throw away up to 40% of all food that is raised in the United States. And we explain that to the students, and they are totally amazed by that, and they are a little anxious by that, and we show them that they can make a difference, that this is how we can help and how they can make a difference. And so in the assembly presentations that we have, we remind them of some very simple recycling that we've been teaching them all along the way. It is the three Rs of recycling, reduce, reuse, and recycle. And we use those and turn them into a food waste presentation by suggesting that they reduce first. So use the reduce by using less. We teach this to our customers, we teach this to our students. So what we want to do is reduce first, use less. In a cafeteria setting, that would be, do you really need 14 packs of ketchup for those french fries that you're eating? And if you aren't going to drink that milk, leave it for somebody else who needs it or wants it. Don't take it and just throw it away. So we talk about the concept of reducing. It saves our natural resources, it saves money, and it saves food waste from going in the landfill. The next thing we teach is, of course, is reuse, and we use the, now that COVID protocol is off, we use the example of the share cart, that if you have unbitten fruit, if you have non-perishable items that are still in their wrappers, put them on the share cart, have them for somebody else. This opens the door to the other part of Senate Bill 1383 that requires you as a city, or they as a jurisdiction in school, to recover that food and take it back to a food bank or nonprofit. So that opens the door to that reusing part of it, to save. And the last one that we talk about, of course, is to recycle those food scraps. And we explain that it's as simple as this, separate your food from your trash. Everybody knows what food is, the rest is trash. And so we move on to then explain that we put everything in its appropriate container, identify the bin, what does it look like, where does it go? And then we show them what we can do with it, anaerobic digestion. We can use that to turn it into sustainable biofuel for creating electricity, or for school buses and transportation. We can pasteurize it and dehydrate it and turn it into livestock feed or dog food even. But the favorite way we do it, and what we try to share with the students, is that we feed the earth what we don't eat. We give it back to the earth in a way, we took the food from the earth, we're going to give it back, and we do that through composting. And that composting will produce a chemical-free nutrient-rich soil that they can grow then their plants and vegetables and flowers, and grow healthy delicious food to close the loop and go back in to start all over again. And so I was explaining this to Laura and Robin, and they said, we've got to leverage this, because we have some Cal recycle money for 1383 education, and this looks like a great rampway into getting into our community. So we together, we worked on a project called Love Your Earth, Recycle Your Food Scraps. And basically, it leveraged the idea that not only do jurisdictions have to collect this food waste and recycle it, as you well know, you need to procure it and buy it back and do something with it. And so we suggested that we give it back to the schools. We put it back into the school gardens so that we can show them the full circle, the full loop of recycling. And that's exactly what we did. We contacted Mandy Gardner at the high school district at Liberty Ranch Egg Department. We asked if they would like some compost on their McCaffrey Farm, and of course, they said, yes, please. How much can we have? And Laura and Robin said, you can have 24 tons. And so that was a little bit of overwhelming, a little overwhelming. So in that agreement, Cal Waste said, hey, we'll pony up and we'll get it to all of the elementary schools. We'll scoop it up. And in the conversations, we decided that we would scoop it up and put it in the green waste container that your residents have to put your food waste in. That way, we can keep that conversation going with them. Here, we're teaching this to you at school, hands-on, take this message home, show what happens to it, here's how we're going to use it next. And so everybody got to play a part in this. You'll notice Laura's in there shoveling some stuff out there. And the Cal Recycle Grant allowed the city to provide the schools with shovels, rakes, wheelbarrows, and the procured compost. When we first thought about these empty gardens with this compost in it, that's when Galt Sunrise Rotary stepped up and supplied flats of plants and vegetables and seed packets for them to plant as well, students to plant as well. So all five elementary schools participated, Greer, Valley Oaks, River Oaks, Morango, and Lake Canyon. All of the students joined in together. It really was a successful campaign. Everybody had a really great time. There were gardens large, there were gardens small. One school had placed a new building on top of their garden, and so they decided they would purchase some flower beds and raised planter boxes so that their students could participate as well. One school had a very large garden that is maintained by their special ed classes, and they all came out and helped deliver this soil right into their boxes. So it was all hands-on. It was hands-on learning, that at every step, we tried to remind those students that this is a message that you need to take home and share with your parents as well. This is what can happen when you are recycling your food and your food waste. And they started to recognize that this was their banana peel and their pizza crust, and they also recognized that this was their plastic straw, and their cap off of their plastic bottle was mixed into this compost, and they would hold it up in the air and they would say, this doesn't belong in the food waste container. So apparently, our message was getting across. The Galt Extended Learning Program has committed to maintaining these gardens throughout the summer, and our education department at Cal Recycle has committed to record what grows, what is harvested, what is eaten, and what is put back into the container again to once again close the loop to recycling. So I'm just here to thank you for your partnership, to communicate that Love Your Earth, Recycle Your Scraps was a huge success, and it really allows us the opportunity to share with the youngest members in our community that nourishing your body is important for healthy living, but nurturing your planet is important for a healthy environment. So thank you very much, and I appreciate all that you have done, that Laura and Robin did, and everybody in the background who helped make that happen as well from the city of Galt. Thank you very much. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you, Lisa, for giving us all that information. Thank you for your partnership between the Cal Waste, the schools, and the city. Thank you for your service.
I did have a comment.
You're welcome.
I just want to congratulate you on your new position. I probably can't think of anybody better for that. And also, it's the infamous 1383, not the famous 1383.
Oh.
Depending on who you ask.
Yes. There's lots of little pieces to that.
Thank you, Lisa.
You'll be seeing me again, I'm sure. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Next agenda item D, public comment. Madam Clerk.
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comments section is for the city council to receive comments, except for brief responses to questions. No discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Consistent with the city council procedural guidelines, the mayor reserves the right to shorten the time limit for speakers to ensure the efficient and timely completion of all city business on the agenda.
Thank you. Any public comment?
Not on that item, no.
All right, thank you. Next agenda item E, report by city council member on regional board, commission, and committees. Vice Mayor Lozano.
Yeah, a couple of things. First of all, I attended the California Council of Governments Legislative Days last, I guess, Wednesday before last, and there we talked about all things transportation, including having some legislators come and talk about their ideas on legislation that was coming through related to that. One of the largest topics was the state legislators' ideas and dilemma they have with the reduction of the sales tax, gas tax, because the administration has asked that we change from combustion engines to electric vehicles, and so the outgrowth of that happens to be that you're going to have less fuel tax, and so a reduction in revenue for the state. And so CalCOG, SAICOG, everybody's trying to be on the front end of this to make it a reasonable transition. I think we recognize that the state's going to do something, and these organizations are on the front lines trying to ensure that in their attempt to replace the reduction of gas tax, that they don't overtax our communities. And so one of the things, just to kind of keep your eye on, is that there's a lot of discussion. Again, it's been going on for a few months, but certainly with a couple of the assembly members that were there, they talked about a per-mile tax. And so there's a lot that goes into that, and a lot of privacy issues that have to be addressed. Certainly, that is one of the things they're looking at. In addition, one of the things that was talked about was the increase in registration for electric vehicles. So let me walk back here and talk about this. So the administration has said, everybody has to have an electric vehicle by 2035, or they're not going to sell any more combustion after that. And now they're looking at increasing the tax on having an electric vehicle. So anyhow, lots going on there, just keep an eye out on that. And again, those were highlights. There were many other issues around arena numbers and things like that that are coming down the pipe in the next couple of years. After that, we had a board meeting, and there wasn't really anything significant to report on that, except for we did take some action on legislative positions and bill tracking, and there's more to come on that. This has kind of been the hot last couple of weeks down there under the dome for them to work on the bills that are coming forward, so. Secondly, SAICOG, I have a land use and natural resources meeting on Thursday, so I'll report back on that. And then lastly, the mayor and I met with the Consumer Service District two by two. Not a lot to report out on that, other than the fire marshal was there and talked about weed abatement and what they're doing to get compliance from property owners that have weeds that are growing. And I think they said by June 9th, they were hoping to have it all complete and at least reviewed. What they do is when people don't mow their weeds on property, they give them a timeline. If it's not done by then, then the district hires somebody to mow and then builds them. And so they're going through that process now, and the amount of those properties that are having to be mitigated by the district is reducing and has been reducing over time because the fees are going up. And I think the fire marshal said that some property owners in the past have used this process as a gardening service so they don't have to go through that process, and with the increased fines, I think that's going away. And then just some general updates from, we provided update to them about things that are going on in the city, and they provided us additional updates in our next meetings, August 15th. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Papino.
On May 23rd, we had the air quality board meeting, and the biggest item out of that was we approved our 2425 fee schedule and budget. And in spite of all the unfunded mandates, we did manage to come up with a balanced budget, and so we'll be going forward with that. And then also, it was a kind of a celebration of the Carl Moyer Program, which actually was started in this air quality district 25 years ago, and it was kind of the first and probably most sensible of the programs to encourage transitioning to clean and probably most sensible of the programs to encourage transitioning to clean, heavy equipment and vehicles. And it actually is a statewide program now. So, that was kind of interesting to see the history of that program. So, those were the, those were the main two events, and that was the only meeting I've had since the last board meeting.
Thank you. Councilmember Farmer?
Yeah, I don't have anything official to report since the last meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Myself, on May 23rd, with city manager and Vice Mayor Lozano, we attended the two-by-two CSD meeting, and same thing discussed. I think Vice Mayor already explained about the weed amendment. That's why we discussed on that meeting. On May 28th, I joined that South Sacramento Conservation Agency meeting. There is only one thing I would like to report as belonged to us is the fiscal year 2024 and 2025 budget. And when looking at the budget, it was fully funded through the mitigation fees with the project application. So, there was around 18 million revenue and very, 18 million expenditure, so they balanced the budget. So, we approved that budget. And that's it, myself. And now, I would like to move the next agenda item, information consent calendar. It is recommended that item 1 through 10 to be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion or action is requested by a council member. Any council member want to poll or want to make any comment on the consent calendar?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, can we pull F10?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. On the consent calendar, Madam Clerk, please read the item 1 through 9.
Receive and file warrants for period ending May 22nd, 2024, minutes of the regular meeting of May 21st, 2024, cancellation of the July 2nd, 2024 city council meeting, Galt municipal code and bylaws update for the Galt Youth Commission, approval of final map and subdivision improvement agreement, Greenwood cottages, phase one, ordinance of the city council of the city of Galt authorizing the levy of special taxes in the community facilities district, including certain annexation territory identified as annexation number seven into the city of Galt CFD district number 2020-1, adopt a resolution designating the city's representative for the NCCSIF Board of Directors, Galt landscaping and lighting engineers reports intention to levy and collect assessments for fiscal year 2425 and set public hearings, and amended claim based on revised findings of apportionment for Transportation Development Act funding.
Thank you. Any public comment on item 1 through 9?
No public comment.
Thank you. May have a motion to approve the item number F1 through 9?
It's moved.
Is moved by Councilmember Farmer, second by Vice Mayor Lozano. Madam Clerk, may have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Lozano?
Aye.
Councilmember Papino?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Mayor Sandu?
Aye. Motion passes by 420. Thank you. On F10, subject, wave competitor bed process and award of contract to Sierra Building System Incorporated for Police Department Door Lock CIP 53HC Coaxempt for 15301C. Public Works, you want to a little bit give us a brief on, very brief on this agenda item? Then Farmer have some question, and then I have some question.
Yes, of course.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Member, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers, John Griffin, Acting Director, Public Works. I'd like to give a little background on the project and efforts performed by the city staff over the last six-plus months on this project. Little background, the access control system that we're looking to replace at the police department building is the original system that was installed when the building was constructed about 20 years ago. This system has been discontinued by the manufacturer, Idena Card, and recognizing that the system was at the end of its useful life, a CIP project was created in the fiscal year 2022 to 2024 budget for this fiscal year. In late October of last year, before work could begin on the project, a smud power surge permanently damaged the access control system. Very shortly after the failure, staff contacted Advanced Sound and Electronic and was told that our system was a total loss. Since the system failure, the PD team has been using a manual key process for this facility, which is both time-consuming to administer and costly anytime the facility needs to be rekeyed. Hearing the report from Advanced Sound about the access system, Public Works and PD staff met to identify desired components that would be useful for a new access control system, both now and into the future. This list included components such as biometrics for areas that require enhanced security measures and future camera integration. Over the last several months, the team has reached out to multiple vendors to discuss the project and requested quotes from these vendors for the replacement of the system. Most vendors stated that they could not provide a system that would meet the system needs, and others never even returned phone calls. Only Sierra Building System provided a quote, and this quote that's in the council packet was generated after multiple virtual and face-to-face meetings to finalize both scope of work, components, and costs. And just as a side note, SBS also currently provides service on the fire system maintenance. So, that's just there to share a little background on the efforts that we went to obtain multiple quotes and where we're at now and why we're presenting this request tonight to move forward with SBS. And with that, the chief and I will be here to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, John, and I do appreciate that. You know, as being part of Public Works, there's been, I don't know, several items where we've kind of pushed back on the, you know, going out for bid, and a lot of times it's actually came back and saved a lot of money, so this is why we do it. Not to say that, you know, that's always the right thing to do every time. I understand access control to a certain extent. I was a low-voltage contractor for like 20 years, so I didn't, although my business didn't do those things, we dealt, we worked side by side with those companies, so I know what this stuff is. In there, in here, it mentions that the, that the system you guys are looking at, at least in the staff report, it says that it would, and I'm looking for the verbiage, but basically, it could be transitioned to biometrics in the future. So, does the system that you're looking at purchase now to replace the one that's no longer working, does it have any biometric features already and just limited? Or is it, or is it not, but it's capable of expand? Can you elaborate on that?
The existing system or the new system?
No, no, the new system that you're looking at buying. Does it have some biometrics? Is it just card reader access, or is it somehow, some biometrics, or is it just upgradable to that? Just kind of either of you?
The current system is only card reader, and the system first phase is what this project, as you're seeing here, does not have any biometrics included. It's just to get us back up and running with the card system.
Okay. So, with that, my question would be, it looks like that we had initially budgeted $250,000 to do this upgrade, because maybe you're probably foreseeing that it was going to be done at some point because of the age of it. This bid is actually significantly less than that, $145,000. So, my question is, would, is it prudent to spend the $145,000 to get something to just fix what you have, and then you can upgrade later? Or what is the cost to just go to something that has the biometrics features now? I mean, we're under by 100 grand. I mean, is that significantly more money, or was that looked at? Or is this a situation where we just really need to get things up and running, and there's not time to really do that?
Yeah, when we, the information we received at the PD that that figure for the $250,000, and John may be able to speak to it a little better, was going to include rewiring and new hardware, but SBS Systems believes that the existing wiring and hardware we're using now can be, continue to be used and not replaced, so there were some cost savings there. And the second thing was that my desire was just to get the system run, back up and running for the card key, which is going to be the super majority of the use. There are some key locations in the building, like the evidence area and stuff that requires dual authentication anyways, and one is a key. I'd like to get away from that. So, it would be, you know, a passcode and a thumbprint, for example. And we'd like to do that in the second phase, because we understand the city is looking sort of at a more comprehensive approach to, you know, building access overall. So, we don't want to hog everybody's time. We just want to get up and running, and then we can look for that secondary piece down the road.
Right, okay. So, so it's probably not, this is probably isn't the case, when you do start to upgrade those areas to biometrics, that it's not going to, it'll just simply be an, it'll simply just be additional stuff. It's not, we're not going to, we're not going to be spending money that we're going to have to, you know, you get what I'm going with this?
Yeah, we're not going to have to re-cut and rebuild. We would just go off of this first phase, and the work that would be done would be new hardware at certain door points, which could be absorbed in the current network.
Right. I guess just for layman's term, I just want to make sure that this isn't like a Band-Aid, and then when we can spend maybe a little more money to get what we really would be the better investment long-term. But if that's not the case, this is not a Band-Aid, this is actually a good, solid base of a new system that can be expanded on to what you want in the future, then, and that's my, that's, you're saying, okay?
Yes.
Okay. And then, just on the process in general, again, you know, I'm always a guy who's really pounds, you know, the multi-bid thing. I understand this situation. First of all, it's way under what you budgeted, so I get that. So, that's good. You have a relationship with this company. That's good. And although I think in private business, I like to do business, and the private sector, I always do business, you know, with someone I've done business with before. That's very common, right? Because you have a relationship, you know what that works like. Unfortunately, in the public sector, we have to go out to bid and all that because we're trying to get the best bang for the taxpayer dollar. So, with that said, I'm not, I'm not against approving this tonight, and I will approve it. I just want to say, there is a little bit of discussion in here, Chris, about updating the, the competitive bidding list to put certain people on, whatever. I think maybe we should come back at some point and maybe to have a discussion about that list again, too, because I know that when I see things go on that list, like if we're buying paper clips, there's no, you know, but if we're going to be spending, like, I want to revisit, like, what's the threshold of money? Because we're spending significant money. I don't want there to be like, well, we always use this company, and we're dropping like, you know, six figures with them regularly. I think when you get into certain dollar numbers, we should be looking, shopping outside of the, you know what I'm saying, even if we like them. So, I just saying, just if I can request a future, if the council, maybe at some point, not a rush, but if we can revisit that list and, and the policy regarding that list or something, maybe.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, John. Thank you, chief. Sounds great. I look forward to seeing that. So, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Myself is, I believe, most of the topic we discussed, same thing I did talk to John today. And I'm not against this one, but we want to make sure when, when things comes up, wave competitor bed process is very general, is very hard to go, because every, that's a very basic principle when you do any project, yes. You know, we have to show, because this is public money, so we have to show what we are doing. And the other thing is, on this, I see the report, the reason why we waving the bidding process.
It's more of a procedural explanation. Instead of going through the formal bidding process that the city's purchasing policy requires, we went ahead and tried to reach out to multiple vendors to get quotes. And because of the price that, the total price here, we met the intent and the spirit, I'm sorry, we met the spirit, but not the, not crossing the T dot and the I every step, but we met the intent of reaching out to multiple contractors. So, it's more of a technicality on, on that.
And you're talking about the timelining, that's why we doing?
Timeline, and, and also, again, we met, no, we met the intent of trying to get multiple quotes from multiple vendors and, and giving them the same spec, so we had apples to apples for bids.
And then, as you mentioned something, the other company have a 250, some kind of estimate, but I don't see in the report.
No, that was, correct.
Let me correct. Because I'm talking about now, this report in the future is much better, you know, if the report is like a little bit more clear, so the council understand is easy for the council to make a decision. So, thank you. But I'm talking, that's why kind of my question, and Councilman Farmer already asked, and chief already explained.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any council member have any comment on that? Any public comment on that?
Yes, Chris Bresman.
Anytime I see waving, I get nervous, to be frank with you. Competitive bidding, to me, is very important. I did pick up on a recent, I don't know how long our competitive bidding process was open, but, you know, looking at the League of California Cities, reason for making an exception would be the lack of receiving bids. So, as far as legality-wise, I think you probably covered there type deal, but I always like seeing competitive bids, to be frank with you, to make sure the tax dollars. Really appreciate Sean's drill down on it. I also appreciate John's feedback on it, because of reality, then it gives you more of the story, and it gives you the transparency. I feel comfortable with saying, hey, pass it as one citizen. So, thank you for answering the questions.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you for your explanation. I totally understand what that means. Any other public comment?
No.
Thank you. If there is no public comment, no comment from any council member, I'm looking to approve that item number F10. Is moved by Councilmember Farmer.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Papino. Madam Clerk may have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Lozano?
Aye.
Councilmember Papino?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Mayor Sandu?
Aye. Motion passes to 420. Thank you. Next agenda item is schedule matter notice of public hearing.
None.
Thank you. And next agenda item H, regular calendar, finance department, subject proposed fiscal year 2024, 2025, 2025 and 2026 budget. Mr. Boring?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The purpose for tonight's agenda item is to introduce the proposed budget and get feedback from council. Staff will incorporate council's feedback into the proposed budget and bring it back for adoption on the June 18th meeting. So, tonight's presentation is informational only. There's no need to approve anything. It's just to say what staff has presented and get feedback. And before we get into the details and all the fun numbers, I just wanted to share some information about the budget process. So, we're starting with a status quo budget, which is items that were previously approved by council with new additions. So, as we go through, we'll outline the, the new additions in the budget. And if I remember how to use a clicker, I'll move it forward. Okay, so we'll start with recent stuff. At the last council meeting, council approved the, the general fund contribution to the Parks and Recreation Fund policy. So, we're going to overview that first. So, this item will look familiar. This is the general fund base calculation, and this is the same information that was included in the council meeting, or the last council meeting. So, we're taking the fiscal year '22, '23 audited general fund expenditures, and of the 20.08 million, or 09 million expenditures, once we pull out the one-time items, which are the, or, and items with significant variability, the unfunded pension liability and capital, that leaves us with 15.47 million in included expenditures. Apparently, this version of PowerPoint doesn't like formulas. But the first little box of gibberish is the general fund base, which is the 15.47 million that we got from the previous slide. The second box there is the contribution percentage, and that's the 6% that council approved in the policy at the last meeting. And that gives us the general fund contribution to the Parks and Recreation Fund, which is 928,032. $928,032. So that's included in the budget. So if approved, that will automatically go from the general fund to the Parks and Recreation Fund. And then we wanted to give some more information. So the, the contribution policy calculation is the 928,000. And through the budget process, we identified additional needs in the Parks and Recreation Fund that will be covered with general fund if needed. So in the proposed budget, there's additional transfers of 613,000 in fiscal year 24, 25, and 648,000 in 25, 26. And those would operate like the general fund contributions in prior years, so we're budgeting that to balance the fund. And if we have significant expenditures in the Parks and Recreation Fund that need those, then we'll transfer that additional amount. So the total general fund budgeted to go to the Parks and Rec Fund is over 1.5 million in each fiscal year. And then we wanted to go over the Measure Q Fund. So in fiscal year 24, we created a separate fund for Measure Q to make it clearer and easier to present. So for this, we are taking the fiscal year 22, 23, and presenting it as if the, we had that fund in that year, just to make it easier to follow along. So in the top left, the 22, 23, that was, we had one quarter of collections for the Measure Q sales tax, so we received a little over a million dollars. The 23, 24 budget, that's the current approved items for that. So we have, you know, 4.6 million in revenue and 2.9 million expenditures. So our estimated fund balance for Measure Q will be 2.8 million at the end of the current fiscal year. In the top right corner is the fiscal year 24, 25 proposed. So we're estimating 4.6 million in revenue and expenditures, and similar in 25, 26, it's 4.7 million for revenue and expenditures. So 24, 25, we're utilizing all of those Measure Q dollars for additional Parks and Rec and Lighting and Landscape Services. And then additionally, at some point, we'll come back with the, the Waterside Project and the Skate Park Project, which are going to utilize some of the Measure Q funds, so those will utilize some of the estimated fund balance. And then we did a similar slide for Measure R. And the 22, 23, and 23, 24 is more for informational, because we're looking at the fiscal year 25 and 26 budget tonight. But at the end of fiscal year 23, we had 1.9 million in fund balance. After the 23, 24 budget, we're estimating 993,000 in fund balance. Part of that's for planned deficit spending to bring down the, the fund balance, and then also carry forward. So we had, I know, some vehicles and other items that were budgeted in fiscal year 23 that we had ordered, but we didn't receive the vehicles till 24. So it inflates your fund balance one year and makes it seem worse the next year. And then in 24, 25, and 25, 26, we're, we have continued planned deficit spending to draw down the fund balance. So at the end of fiscal year 25, 26, we're projecting 678,000 in fund balance. And if we get to the end of 25, 26, and that's our ending fund balance, then we'll reevaluate the deficit spending, because at that point, we'll want to take a more balanced approach for future budget cycles. And this lovely large table is just sort of the, a summary of our proposed budget. And I'm just going to highlight some of the interesting items here. And this is similar to the table that's included in the agenda report, but we made some updates since then. All of the fiscal year 23, 24 fund balance have been updated with more recent budget information in the fiscal year 23 audited actuals. So if you look in the general fund, the, the first line there with numbers, we have some deficit spending in fiscal year 25 and 26, and that's planned. We have some items, such as the, the Chamber MOU, which are utilizing former ARPA dollars that the city's already received that revenue, so that's in fund balance. So items like that aren't drawing off our current recurring revenue, they're drawing down on fund balance. So all of our recurring expenditures in general fund are met with our recurring revenue, so we're not building in a structural deficit, that's just some planned deficit spending for items that we received the revenue that's funding them in prior years. And then also, the storm, stormwater, water, wastewater, and some of the capital reserve funds will have deficit spending, and that's just planned for different projects that we have. A lot of times, we'll, you know, receive revenue, especially for the capital reserve funds, a lot of those are fee or based with other stuff, so, you know, we collect them over time, and then once we get a significant amount, or we have a project that's needed, we use those funds to, to fund that. And my favorite fund on this one is the, the Water Meter Fund, Fund 23 at the bottom of the page. It's a debt service fund, so it looks terrible on paper, because we have, fiscal year 23, 24 projected negative 1.3 million fund balance, and that's just reflecting the, the debt that's owed. And then each year, well, for, actually doesn't have deficit each year, but that also rolls up into our water fund. So it's normal for that fund to have a deficit, it just shows that, you know, we have more debt that's owed for that fund than assets. And that was, that loan was taken out when the city had to implement water meters for each residential connection, and that's repaid through utility customers. And then the other half of the funds for the city, this one's similar, you'll see, like in Fund 29, the Sacramento Transportation Authority, will have deficit spending, and that's just due to projects that are coming up, so receive, you know, regular revenue, and then as projects come up, we'll complete those. And you'll see Measure R, Fund 47, also has deficit spending, and that's planned, just to draw down the balance. And then our Successor Agency Fund 90 is similar to the, the Water Meter Loan. That's the fund that we record debt that was issued by the Redevelopment Agency. And so we've completed our last and final ROP, so that'll eventually work its way down to zero. But the negative fund balance just identifies that we still have debt that's owed, which is more than current assets held. And the, the deficit spending is because we're using some of the, the bond proceeds to pay the debt, which is approved by the state in our last and final ROPS. So it's one of those weird funds to look at on paper, but that's the way it's supposed to look. And then citywide, for fiscal year 24, 25, we're projecting 87.2 million in revenue and 81.7 million in expenditures. And for 25, 26, it's 85.09 million in revenue, which is a little over 2 million less than the prior fiscal year, and that's just due to grant funds and other one-time items that are in fiscal year 25. And for expenditures, we're projecting 91 million, and that's higher mostly because of different capital projects that are planned. Do you have any questions on different fund items before we move on? I'll give you a chance to interject every so often.
I was just going to ask you, Matt, if we could ask you to go along that way, I don't have to keep going back. A couple of questions real quick. On the total line at the very bottom, you have the proposed expenditures for 24, 25, 87.2 million, and then the expenditures, 81.7, so you have a leftover of 5.5 million. So that, that 5.5 million leftover, well, we're underspending by that much, but that, that already includes setting aside our, our money based on our reserve policies and stuff, right? So...
No, the, we don't set that money aside, that'll roll, so the reserve policy rolls up into the fund balance. So we don't actually set it aside, we just, of the reserve, a certain portion of that is earmarked for that.
So the five, so the 5.5 million does what?
So, so each fund is separate, so it, you know, goes into fund balance in respective funds.
That, that's accumulated leftover.
Yeah.
Okay. So can you back up one slide on the, just something caught my eye. On the firing range, it has the, for 24, 25, has a 365,000 revenue, 355 expenditures, so there's a $10,000 basically profit, I guess, for lack of a better word. But then you fast forward to 25, 26, and it looks like there's a $300,000 deficit. Is that some kind of project coming up that we need to spend that? Because that's significantly...
Yeah, that's some capital improvements at the, the fire range. So that's another one where we get the rent, and so there are some expenditures that hit that fund, but the remainder goes into fund balance for that fund. And then as we get enough, or we have projects that need to be completed, then those are funded with fund balance from that fund.
Okay. And can you back up one more slide? Sorry.
No problem.
Uh, one more to queue. All right, on this one, and thank you for, by the way, for breaking out this like you do with Measure R, obviously it makes it very simple for everybody, even the public, if they look at it. So if I'm understanding this correctly, so we had 4.5 revenue, we've expenditures, and then we have 2.754868. That exact number obviously is repeated all the way through fiscal year 25, 26. So is that, so when I'm looking at 24, 25, and 25, 26, those two next, whatever, it, it looks like we're assuming that we're going to take in those numbers, 4.6, and then 4.7, and we're going to expend all that, but we're still going to keep that rolling balance? Can you dive into that a little more for me?
Yeah, so, so the way it's set up, so Measure Q, anytime we have a surplus where our revenue is higher than expenditures, that'll increase our fund balance, and that stays in that specific fund. So that'll be just for Measure Q uses. So, for example, if in 24, 25, or 25, 26, the expenditures exceeded revenue, like let's, which will likely happen when we bring an item back for awarding the poolside contractor of the skate park. Part of council direction previously was to fund some of that with Measure Q. So we're currently budgeting to use all of the revenue that we've received, so when those items come, that'll make the expenditures higher than revenue, so we'll eat away at some of the fund balance in Measure Q for those specific projects when approved.
So, but the way the chart looks, the way it's coming off to me is that you're saying that for fiscal year 25, 26, which is, you know, I mean, eight, what is that, 18 months down the road, or anyways, that, that we've already, that we have already committed 4.738 million dollars?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I have for now. Thanks, Matt.
And I'll just, so those funds are going to fund needs in the Parks and Recreation Fund and the Lighting and Landscape District Funds? So we went through, and we have the general fund contribution policy, so once we figured the, the needs of those funds, we factor in the general fund contribution, and then Measure Q covers the additional amounts, and that's why there's additional general fund contribution into the Parks and Recreation Fund, because there, once we applied Measure Q for the different projects and improvements that they're, they're planning in those funds, there is still additional need.
Yeah, go ahead.
Actually, I have several. And back on exactly what you're talking about now, so slides three and four, I guess, two back. One more. There we go. Okay. So at our last meeting, we had a discussion about what percentage of the general fund would be going to Parks and Recreation. And it appears, at least to me, and I heard part of your expla, I mean, I heard your entire explanation about what this slide means, but it appears to me that, that percentage is higher than 6%.
Correct. The, the total budgeted general fund contribution to Parks and Recreation is higher than the 6%. So we, we calculated the contribution policy. So if council were to approve the budget as it is, that 928,000 would automatically go to the Parks and Recreation Fund, but the additional 600,000 per year, it would function like how the general fund contribution did prior to the policy. So if there were expenditures, if we expended all of what we budgeted in the Parks and Recreation Fund, then we would transfer that amount, the additional amount. But if there were savings, or there were projects that weren't completed, then we would only transfer the additional amount needed to balance the fund.
So, and again, I, I've been around government budgets a long time, and I'm just having a hard time wrapping my head around why we would need additional contributions when two weeks ago, we approved a million doll, almost a million dollars, and now it's 1.5, and we're expending all of the Measure Q money. So is there, is there a better, better way you can think of to explain that, so I can understand it a little better? Because had I known that, my suggestion for percentage may have been higher, or I would have questioned, if we have this contribution policy in place, why, why would we need additional funds on top of that? And why weren't we provided that information ahead of time?
So we won't always have additional funds. It was, once we went through the budget, and some of the Parks and Recreation Department is expanding and taking on more of their own services and different equipment that they need to do the landscaping, and there's other equipment purchases. So some of that's like additional one-time need that they're going to need, so it won't always be that, you know, there's a 600,000 additional contribution. The policy more set, you know, here's a baseline of what we're going to contribute and guarantee this minimum. And then as we go through the budget process, if there's additional general fund capacity and need in the Parks and Recreation Fund, then the general fund can contribute more to meet those needs and, you know, get equipment or other items, but it's not, you know, anticipated that every year there would be an additional 600,000 contribution.
Okay. So I just did a little math, and it's, instead of 928 with Measure Q, it's going to be 6.1 million this year, or for next fiscal year, and then an additional 200,000 or 100. An additional, almost 100,000 the next year.
Yeah, and part of that, Measure Q isn't going solely to the Parks and Recreation Fund, it's also supporting operations in the Lighting and Landscape District Funds.
Right, I get that. Where in, in that, in slide three, do we show the contribution also from Lighting and Landscape? Because there's money, tax money collected there that goes into Parks and Rec for Lighting and Landscape.
So the Lighting and Landscape Districts are their separate funds, so they don't contribute money to the Parks and Recreation Fund? So the, the policy that was approved just as a general fund contribution to the Parks and Recreation Fund? And then the operations for the Lighting and Landscape Districts occur in their own individual funds?
We use Parks and Recreation as a pass-through to Lighting and Landscape.
No. So we have the Parks and Recreation, it's a little bit confusing, because the, the Parks and Rec Department have staff that operate, you know, within the Parks and Recreation Fund and the Lighting and Landscape District Funds. So general fund in the current budget is making contribution to balance the Parks and Recreation Fund, and the operational needs of the Lighting and Landscape Districts, that's not met with the taxes collected, is being balanced with Measure Q.
So that's part of the 400 and, 400 and, 4.6 million that we're using for Measure Q is going to Lighting and Landscape?
Correct.
Okay. I'm, I'm going to have to dive deeper in the next couple of weeks with you folks on that, because I...
Yeah, and we can provide a, a more detailed breakdown of where the, which funds Measure Q is being used to support, if that would make it...
I totally understand that, I've been part of the, all of those conversations. I'm just, sometimes I don't get things the first time around. And one of the things for future presentations, it would have, had I had the, the slide deck that was printed, ahead of time, it might have popped out a little better for me, so. But we'll work in the next couple of weeks, but I do have some concern about that, on the heels of also not even really knowing what we're going to need in the future, right? We have a Parks Master Plan coming out, and I, I know a budget's kind of a fluid document, but it appears that we've been stacking, and I want to make sure that everything else is also taken care of, if that, if that makes sense, so. I'll, I'll watch the rest of the presentation, I'm sure I'll have some other questions about other pieces, but I'd certainly, in the next couple of weeks, like to sit down and figure, at least get it right in my head about what this all, what this piece means with the addition of Measure Q. And I know it's new, so.
Uh, Councilman Lozano, if I may ask a question, or Mayor, uh, for, uh, Councilman Lozano, is it, uh, the Measure Q support of the Lighting and Landscape District that's giving you heartburn?
Not at all. It, it, in, in these two slides, in three and four, it appears that 1.5 million is different than 928,000 that we approved two weeks ago, and I'm having a hard time understanding that connection. And so, like I said, I don't want to take up everybody's time on it.
No, it's okay, because it might be an important point that we need to clarify, and like, if we can't, we'll move on. But my understanding of the 6%, and then the 900,000 that you see today, was really a minimum. And I think there was a little bit of discussion about, like, if you looked at the history of how the general fund, um, helped, you know, the Parks and Rec Fund was on an as-needed basis, because the revenue produced from the market and other sources, you know, was not always consistent, so the general fund contribution varied, and that the 6% was a minimum, uh, requirement, and maybe more. And I think the history showed that the contribution was more at times.
So, so Rich, let me jump in a...
Go ahead. Let me just, let me just make this statement. Again, I, I don't want to take up a bunch of time. I know it's a steady session. So we have several res, uh, several sources of revenue for Parks and Recreation. Some are restricted and some are not. By all intents and purposes, Measure Q is, because we've decided that. The income from the market is. Our general fund contribution is, because we made that decision two weeks ago. At some point, at least, like I said, in the next couple of weeks, I'd like to sit down with you about what all that adds up to, and what part of that is, and I'm sure this is coming in two weeks, but what part of that is operations, what's part of that's capital? And, because quite honestly, I don't remember ever having a discussion among, about Measure Q funding coming in, and what part of that we were going to designate for capital, as opposed to operations. And so, um, and again, it's just an interesting, in protecting taxpayer money, we've asked for this, our citizens have asked to ha, increase sales tax, all of that's funneling in, and it appears that we just keep piling on. So if, if there is a need outside of Parks and Rec, I'd, or, or any depart, any department for that matter, I'd like to know what we're spending the money on. And, and again, I think the biggest thing I, heartburn I have is, two weeks ago, we approved almost a million dollars out of general fund, and now there's over half a million dollars more. And I just need to get that, I guess, rationalized in my head and, and figure out what that really, what that truly means. And again, I think, I think it's important that we, we fund Parks and Rec, but I'm just having a hard time with that other, other piece.
Yeah, I, I just want, I, I think it's, Warren's spending a little bit of time on this. Thank you, Rich. I agree 100% on everything he said. Uh, I would, that's where I was kind of struggling. If I'm understanding what your explanation is, is we approved, so when we looked at the numbers, looked at the average contributions that, that the general fund was giving to Fund 06, that shortfall, we'll call it, right? We, we came up with the 6% because we felt like that was kind of right in the ballpark of what the average was. But what you're saying is that under normal circumstances, 928 would be okay, but because there's some additional costs that are one-time costs of 600 and some thousand, that had we even not approved the 928, let's say we hadn't even approved that, that 6% policy, that this year or this next fiscal, or whatever, that we would be contributing 1.5 million dollars as a shortfall?
Well, that's what we would budget. So the 928 was the actual, so I believe it was fiscal year 22, 22, 23 we looked at. So we had budgeted 1.5 million. Uh, so that's if, you know, all of our revenue and expenditure projections for the Parks and Recreation Fund were accurate. Without the general fund contribution, then they would have a deficit. So we, we budget to have a balanced budget, so that way, you know, we're not deficit spending in the Parks and Recreation Fund on an ongoing basis. Uh, but when, you know, at the end of the fiscal year, when we look at all the actual revenue collected and actual expenditures, the, the actual need was only the 900,000.
So, so in addition to that, what I just said, going down the, kind of the same path as Rich, and try, what, what I'm also seeing is that we, so you're saying that the costs of Measure Q are, are helping offset the shortfalls of the Lighting and Landscape District? Now, I know that when we, we as a council, uh, said we're going to use the Measure Q for blah, blah, that part of that was with Lighting and Landscape. However, my understanding is that the 928, or whatever that number is, 800,000, million, we'll just call it a million, historically, that million has been the O fund, the O1, uh, contribution to, to cover the shortfalls, some of those being the shortfalls in the Lighting Landscape. So if that contribution should be covering that already, then why are we then dipping into the main Measure Q fund to do so? And with that also too, part three, is I'm with Rich on the fact that what I'm seeing, and again, maybe we're just not understanding it correctly, is what I'm seeing by those, by those future projections, is that we're already have all the money for Measure Q spoken for, and we haven't even had a Parks Master Plan put in front of us. We don't even know what the, the citizens' priorities are going to be for projects. So that's what I'm seeing too. So, I mean, I don't know if that's Rich, what Rich is going, but I feel like that's what Rich said, and I'm, I'm 100% on the same page. Like, I feel like, I'm like, wait, we're, all that money's already committed? That doesn't seem right. I don't remember doing that. So I don't know if we're just confused here or what, but I'm, I'm the, I'm with you, Rich, so.
Yeah, and so, uh, just to be clear, that 900,000 was just the contribution to the Parks and Recreation Fund. So before Measure Q, uh, in, the general fund had contributions to both, or to the Parks and Recreation Fund and the Lighting and Landscape District Funds. And in the Measure Q spending policy that was approved for fiscal year 24, uh, Measure Q was used to, uh, meet the operational needs of the Lighting and Landscape District Funds, so there wasn't a general, or non-Measure Q general fund contribution to those funds anymore. But we kept the general fund contribution to the Parks and Recreation Fund at the existing level. So that way, it was the, only the additional Parks and Recreation and additional costs to move to the, the weekly landscaping were covered by the Measure Q. And so we have the, the general fund contribution policy that ki, sort of keeps that minimum, but it's not limiting, if, you know, there's additional needs that the general fund or council wants to fund, then the general fund is still available for that.
So again, this is not really a question, this is more a statement, and I'll just end it with this, is that we have recently in the past approved some new operations-type stuff out of Measure Q. We've expanded some, there was some one-time purchases of equipment for keeping up with parks landscaping, so on and so forth. There was some, some, some additional positions which were, are going to be reoccurring, obviously. But I don't remember committing, you know, and these numbers for Measure Q are actually much higher than what we were, the numbers we were given, like, when we were making the decisions. So, again, I'm kind of referring back to, I think what Rich was saying is, I feel like, I would like to know how much of those Measure Q, you know, projected budgets are operational stuff, which is going to be reoccurring, like bodies, you know, people, stuff that's not going to go away, and how much of it's going to be one-time expenditures for things we're doing around town? I feel like this needs a bigger conversation. And, and with all that said, tonight, we're being asked for some additional positions. So now I'm kind of like, whoa, I don't, I don't even, I don't even know what to think now. So, I would like some, a lot more information.
Sure, so we'll, we'll provide a, a breakdown of Measure Q and show kind of where the increases are in the different categories, whether it's personnel, the, you know, maintenance operations, or capital. And so we'll get that out before the, the next budget meeting.
Okay. That basically covers the, probably same question I had, but different way. The way I'm reading this, we've budgeted for the next two years, this indicates that every penny of Measure Q goes to Park and Rec.
Parks and Recreation and Lighting and Landscape Districts.
Okay, correct. Uh, which was, yeah, a lot of the purpose, because that stuff needed, uh, repair. Um, so every penny is going into that for Measure Q. We are taking 6% of the general fund, that's going to Park and Rec. And at some point during the budget process, we've identified another little over half million dollars of stuff that needs to be done above and beyond that.
Correct.
That's the way, okay. So that, yeah. And my, so my only question, um, obviously I have, you know, no problem with those first two things, because we've said that's where that money needs to go. My only question was, what did we identify extra that needs to be done? And sometime in the next two weeks, we can, uh, have that answer, if I'm reading it right. Okay, just making sure.
I, I, I think, and I'll just, I'll stop after this comment. I, I think what would be helpful, at least for me, is we've identified the dollar amount per year for Measure Q. Um, you've given us a dollar amount that you're recommending for, um, the contribution policy, which we set two weeks ago, and then additional con, contribution. And then I would also like to see the dollar amount that LNL is putting in, um, in total. Um, and that would be, and I can look it up. I mean, I have them all right here, but they're in this, those huge reports that we approved today. I don't remember the exact numbers for each one. I just look at the administrative costs, but all of the costs for, for that and the revenue that's generated.
We can, we can include those in the breakdown to make it just a simpler, high-level place to start, so we can look at, um, for, so for the Lighting and Landscape Districts, we'll put, you know, here's the revenue generated, or, you know, taxes collected for that specific Lighting and Landscape District, and then the expenditures, and then highlight, you know, here's the contribution from Measure Q.
I, I, I have, that would be helpful. I, I don't necessarily personally need that detail, just what's the revenue of the three districts? Because we just reviewed, um, what the revenue is in each of them, I pretty much have an idea, but what the revenue in each district is and what the Measure Q contribution is.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Matt, are we going to, in the future, get a lineup? This is outside of that question, just provoke the thought in my head. Uh, so we, for future budgets, when, I know all these, these places aren't built yet, but we're bringing all these new developments under these new CFDs, like CFD 2020 and 21, and, right? So will we start seeing as part of the budget process, the, the end, the revenue that's coming in from those and the expenditures going out, like we do with the LNL 1, 2, and 3 historically?
Yeah, so we have, uh, Fund 51 is the, or no, 52, I'm sorry, is the CFD 2020 dash 1.
All right, well, sorry, I didn't notice it there.
Yeah, no problem, it's...
All right.
There's tons of numbers, they, they hide themselves pretty well in there.
Okay.
Okay, and so now we'll move into some of the, the new requests that are included. So these are just going to be, uh, mostly the M and O, so we have personnel separated out in a separate section. Uh, but for the general fund, we included the, uh, reinstating the council discretionary funds. Uh, so that's 5,000 each fiscal year, and that's, uh, each council member would have a thousand dollars of discretionary funds that they could, uh, contribute or use for what they see fit. Um, in fiscal year 24, 25, there's $44,000 for election costs, and that's the, the cost for the city elections and the upcoming ballot. There's two council member, um, positions on the ballot, and then the city treasurer and city clerk. Um, IT consolidation, this one's a little confusing, so this isn't a new cost, but we're bringing it into the general fund. So in prior years, we direct charged a lot of the IT costs, but it was just sort of prorated. Uh, and administratively, it's, it's very difficult to both budget and to bill and, and track all of those. Uh, so to simplify it, we moved those into the general fund, and then those are allocated back to departments through the cost allocation plan. Um, so it makes it much easier for everyone, um, because a lot of it's, you know, recurring bills we get for, like, city internet service, or, you know, our phone system. And we would allocate it to, it was over 20 different fund and department combinations. So like at the beginning of the year, it's, uh, very difficult to get a PO issued, because it needs so many different people to approve it. Um, and then every month when we get a bill, someone's got to figure out each individual, um, fund and department breakdown of that. So we're moving it into IT, so it's, it, it may have some additional costs to the general fund, but the majority of it should be offset by, uh, changes to the cost allocation plan. But it just makes it a lot simpler for, for the IT department. Uh, we also add an IT contingency, uh, for 50,000 each fiscal year, and that's just to meet any, you know, unforeseen IT needs if we have a server that breaks or other, um, critical infrastructure or equipment, they can replace that without having to worry about having that budgeted. Uh, in fiscal year 24, 25, there's the PD mobile computer replacement, so that's replacing the, the computers in the police vehicles. Uh, there's the, PD has the Axon upgrade in 24, 25, and 25, 26 for 120,000 each year. And that's company, they do the body worn cameras and some other services for the police department. Uh, we have PD vehicles, so there's 330,000 in 25, 26, and that would be, uh, three vehicles completely outfitted. Uh, there's the MSE HVAC and floor repairs, so that's the Public Works and Community Development Department building where they're housed, and that's 551,000. And we just, the general fund portion of our unfunded pension liability is 360,000 in each year. And that's, we take the amount CalPERS mandates we pay, and we allocate it based on, uh, the employee distribution. So do we have any questions on this slide before we go on?
Yeah, Matt, uh, go ahead, Rich.
I, I have just one question. Um, we, we as a council have never had council discretionary funds, and personally, I don't think it's appropriate. And so what I would like at some point is, I, I think I understand the intent of it, and it's very, very good intention, I just would not like to have it, honestly. Um, but what I'd like at some point is, if we can dig up the, any documentation of why it came to be and why it went away. I suspect it went away because, as, well, as I remember it, it went away because of reduction in budget need, the need to reduce the budget. But if we could get some documentation sent out to us about the development of it and what the policy is behind it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Will do.
Uh, so my, I have a comment and then a question. So my comment, on the election, 44,000, we also have an election in '26 though, so why is that not, number not repeat?
It's 26.
Oh, it's 25, because the latter part of the, okay, got it. And I, and I would like to comment on the discretionary. Uh, it, the discretionary, I remember went away when we had make massive budget cuts, you know, it was the, one of the first things to go, which was appropriate. Um, I don't, I don't actually have a problem with it coming back. 5,000 is practically peanuts. That money just for the public knowledge is not money that we just use, like, we don't, that's not for our own personal use. That was always money that council, uh, when you had like a nonprofit that came forward that was looking for, um, the city to help with a certain project or an event in town or whatever, and there was a lot of red tape and going through that, the council had discretion to give, you know, thousand, their thousand dollars that was allocated to that person, council member to, you know, the Rotary, or the, you know, the Lions Club, or whatever that, or, you know, was support FFA, or whatever it was, that was always what that was. Obviously, when we started chopping money, it was appropriate that went away. I support having it back, as long as the budget allows for it, and it's, you know, we're not overspending, obviously, with our, within our means, but looking at these staggering numbers here, to say that 5,000 could go back into the community through the discretion of the five of us, I don't think there's a problem with that. It's just my two cents, but.
Is there a, for my ignorance, is there an existing policy dictating what that can be? Because what I see is a thousand-dollar campaign donation during campaign years.
We'd have to look and see. I know, uh, previously when it was used, like, the, if you, like, let's say you wanted to use your thousand dollars, you'd have to bring an item and present it to council on what you wanted to use. So, um, like Councilmember Farmer said, a lot of it went to, uh, community organizations. I think they did, that started the, the Military Banner Program. Um, well, it's gone to like the Historical Society, or they used it for, uh, community garden in the past. So it's, in order to use it, it was something that would have to be presented at a council meeting.
I would be totally fine with talking about policy though, to set where you can't just use it. I would be fine with that. If you want to revisit the policy on it, yeah.
But you know, on, on this, uh, discussion, you know, 5,000, I believe that was on that time when we cut down all the department, and we cut, major cut down everything. Uh, my opinion is both way, it's no matter, you know, we get 5,000, but this 5,000 is not going to go to anybody's person. It's can go to, I believe the policy is you can donate to only nonprofit organization. It's these organizations are doing better for the city. So, and let's discuss on the, uh, next meeting.
Uh, we'll, at some point in the near future, if council would like to see a policy prior to approving the budget and the funds, we can, uh, put something together. But if council is okay and approves the budget with the discretionary funds, we can come back with a standalone... back with a standalone presentation on, you know, the policies regarding the use of the funds, you know, and maybe some discussion on how we got to where we are.
I would just like to be able to read before I approve it
Sure.
what we're approving. We've heard that from several people tonight about what they think that it was for. But the bottom line is, is I'm approving taxpayer dollars being spent, and I want to know what we're spending it for.
Okay.
That's it.
Matt, are we gonna... I mean, I think this is a bigger question here, so I just say it now. I've actually spoken to Chris about this already tonight, but as we go on the slides. But we have a lot of things here, like, you know, you've kind of touched on each one of these, what each one of these is. So I appreciate that, like the 330s for three vehicles, that's very helpful and all that kind of stuff. But I... And maybe this slide's not a good example of it, but as we go through, there is, you know, you're not even on the next one, but as you'll see in these further slides as the public will see, I would like a much more detailed breakdown. And I know that Chris and Sains would provide that. I would like a more detailed breakdown of, you know, I don't want to see like new equipment, 500 grand. You know, I want to know, like, I would like to see that before we approve the budget.
Yeah.
Before the actual approval happens. We can see like a specific breakdown. Like on the Axon upgrade, just be like, you know, we're gonna upgrade some software, this or whatever, just a little bit more of a detailed breakdown. You gave us a little bit of one, but just, I would like that on writing for everything that we have through here. On all the new additional stuff that we're adding, I'd like to know what those are. Some of them are gonna go without saying, but some of them are not. So, thank you.
Okay, and then our next slide, new request for Parks and Recreation. So there's replacement of the golf carts that are used at the various Parks and Recreation facilities for $45,000 in fiscal year 2425. Additional vehicles. And there's a asterisk on the vehicles and the mowers. This is showing the Parks and Recreation Fund portion of it, but those are allocated to the Parks and Recreation and the Lighting and Landscape District Funds. So there's additional cost to that, but those are in the other funds. So there's the $58,800 in 2425 for vehicles and $29,400 in 2526. And I believe that's two vehicles in fiscal year '25 and one in '26. The replacement of two mowers per year, and so the Parks and Recreation Fund portion of those costs is a little over $25,000 each fiscal year. There's a floor scrubber to replace the old equipment that the city has that is problematic and sometimes functional, and that's $25,000 in fiscal year '2425. There's $20,000 in fiscal year '25 to replace the tables and chairs at the Littleton Center. There's a traffic control truck in 2526 for $65,000, and that would be utilized for, you know, different streetscape maintenance that the Parks and Recreation Department's doing. I believe it also, other road closures they would have to do. There's almost $19,000 in fiscal year '25 for portable basketball hoops. The ones the city currently has are very old and failing. There's Aquatic Center equipment replacement for $71,000, and that's separate from the pool side. So that's just other fixtures and equipment at the Aquatic Center. Flatbed cars for the Aquatic Center for $40,000 in fiscal year '25, and a shade structure and for the market and additional equipment for the market for almost $64,000 in '2425.
I just have a really quick question. I think all of these are... I know the... I think I know the genesis for most of the need here, and I think that it's appropriate. I just want to make sure that's all part of the 6.1 million that you identified early on in the presentation as the budget. That's all within that, right?
Correct. All of these items are included in that.
Okay, thank you.
Now, I just wanted to say, going back to my comment previously about the breakdown, I just want to be clear on kind of what I'm asking for. For example, Aquatic Center equipment replacement, I'm not asking that before we approve the budget, that you take and break down $71,000 and be like, we're buying two LiveFest, you know, a floaty, and, you know, three cups for the staff. I don't need that detail. I just would like a general description and kind of an idea, I understand what $71,000 is being spent for within that realm. Does that make sense?
Sure.
Because I think I've... I think you're looking at me like, you know, I don't need that down to like every single...
Yes, not each individual item we're buying, but just a more detailed description of what those are.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, the traffic control truck, that's kind of, that's one item, right? You could give a brief description, that'd be helpful. When you get into like Aquatic Center equipment, I don't expect you to break down like 500 items that you might buy that year, and then make it add up to $71,137. That's not what I'm asking for. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just make one clarification? The flatbed cars are for the gulf market, not the Aquatic Center. There's really no reason to have a flatbed cart out at the...
I did have a question about that, yeah. Thank you.
So it was just one mistake on that. And then the carts above, those are for the Parks and Rec side. That's the difference between the two.
Okay, now I'm confused. Help me, Armando. Isn't the market Parks and Rec?
Yes, but Parks itself is asking for carts for the... To do maintenance in the parks, where the flatbeds are for the... They're for the specific division. We didn't lump it all into one sum.
Oh, got it.
So the market needs this, Parks needs that, Recreation needs this.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then for the water and wastewater are presented together, because a lot of these items are allocated to both funds. And so we'll give more detailed, like the new vehicle in the water fund in '2425. And we kind of lumped the... There's additional replacement of existing trucks, dump truck and backhoe, so we can give more of a breakout for that. But those items are $407,000 in the water fund for '2425. And the wastewater fund, that portion of the trucks, dump truck and backhoe is $234,000. And then replacement for other equipment and a backhoe for the wastewater fund is almost $300,000 in '2425.
Matt, quick question, and maybe this is not a question for you, maybe it's for John, and I don't even know if you can answer this, John, but I vaguely remember buying a new vac truck, and it was very expensive. Is that not what this is? What can... Do you remember?
I don't. I'll need to look into that.
Okay. That can be one of the detail on...
I remember talking to Mike about this before, because I questioned the same thing. And I'm gonna get some of the terminology wrong, but we did use ARPA funds, and it was like $800,000 to buy...
That's...
I think it was called a vac truck, but it's not really the vacuum truck. It's a water truck that does something else.
Okay.
And the city has more than one, so this is replacing the... A different one that the city has.
Okay.
So we still have that other new item. It's not replacing the one that was recently purchased with ARPA. It's another older piece of equipment the city has.
Thanks.
And then going through some of the capital improvement funds for citywide, there's the citywide locks that was touched on a little bit earlier, so we're budgeting $250,000 for that. So that's replacing the locks for different city facilities due to expansion and some of their old age. And then $250,000 also for a master plan update. And then the bottom one shouldn't be citywide. I'll have to update that, but there's an impact fee study for $150,000.
Should not be citywide?
I think it's in a different fund. I'll have to look. They shouldn't both be citywide. I know the locks and master plan are citywide, so I'll get an updated slide and get that out to you guys.
Impact fee study, elaborate briefly. What is that?
I can...
For the public.
So that would be for the water and wastewater impact fees. Those fees have... It's been a number of years since they've been updated, and so we need to update those to bring them current.
Thank you, John.
And then moving on to everyone's favorite personnel requests. So in the general fund, we have two new positions that are included in the proposed budget. There's an IT analyst, and that's $129,000, and an assistant special events manager for $119,000. Do you have any questions about new positions? And then the departments can answer those for you.
Yeah, I'll dive in this real quick. So it's my understanding, the IT analyst, I mean, there's been a broader discussion going on. I know Chris has been good about... Well, actually, it started with Lorenzo and then Chris about, you know, in the wake of our IT hack or whatever it was that we had when Mr. Haglund was here back, that we've identified a real need to really, you know, rethink our IT. So we've been trying to beef up IT, not just equipment that we did with all that money back then when the breach happened or whatever, but this is just staff, whatever. So I understand the IT analyst is part of that whole transition, so I don't need a detailed... You'd given me some information. The assistant special events manager, so my understanding of that is, you know, we moved, so Genesis, which was currently working under Jackie Garcia and doing, has then, has transitioned over to community development, working with Amy Mendez. So now, what my understanding is that Jackie Garcia is being pulled between special events and running the market. And this council clearly has made it clear that we want to have, you know, a big focus on the market and making sure that we push forward on making it, you know, the revenues continue to climb instead of going the other way, so we need to focus on that. And what you've told me, Armando, is that you would like to see Jackie have her time, she needs to be focused on the market, so we need somebody to be handling special events, not her. Is that clear?
Correct. It's, Jackie's done an incredible job with our events throughout the city, including the Saturday market, concerts in the park. But those take a lot of time, and the time it's taken away is from the gulf market. There's been a couple of comments made wanting to focus more on the revenue at the market, where we've continued to have events on the weekends, continue to raise our revenues throughout the year, and the more time she's able to spend focusing on that is for the betterment of the market.
Okay, thank you. And then the reclassification stuff, obviously, this is like just, this is promoting or enhancing current positions, right? This is not new positions. These just look like...
Correct. These are changes to existing full-time positions that are already approved. So the assistant clerk administrator is reclassification for an executive assistant. The IT director is to reclassify the IT manager. The senior building inspector would reclassify an existing building inspector. The executive assistant is reclassifying a supervising administrative assistant. And the mechanic supervisor is a reclassification for a current senior equipment mechanic.
Okay.
All right. Mayor, I have a couple of questions. One is for Armando. When Genesis moved from your department to Economic Development, did you fill that position or that position was vacant?
I'm gonna ask Jackie to come in and explain that situation.
But I'm talking about if that position's still open, then we don't need to be...
Good evening, Mayor City Council. So we currently have a 20-hour part-time position that is filling that Genesis's position. 20 hours is very minimal for what of the demand is for events, and with Saturday market having up to 80 vendors and still recruiting, it doesn't give a lot of time for that 20-hour position to focus, or myself to focus on, making sure that we're really educating the vendors on what items that they need and really how can we continue to expand, so...
So that's mean that 20-hour position, you can make that 20 to 40 hour, or you guys also want to keep that 20 and then adding another position? That's my question.
It would go 20 to 40.
So you're going from just a small part-time position that's helping to go into an actual real position
Yes.
with enhanced duties and all that. So duties wouldn't even be, I mean, they'd be significantly different.
So my question is if we're going to 20 to 40, is cost you 118?
Those are full burden rates. That includes all benefits. That's not just the salary.
Okay, all right. On this one, I have another question, like in senior building inspector, who is the senior building inspector? I know they are, right?
We currently do not have a senior building inspector. We have a building inspector, that's Rusty. He's a building inspector, has been doing the work of a senior inspector for quite some time.
And what's the Jack's position?
Pardon me?
Zack, what's his position?
His current position is building inspector, not senior inspector.
Okay. Thank you. All right, I don't have any question on this page.
I have a couple of questions about the reclassifications, and it's just generally speaking. Maybe this is for you, Chris.
Okay.
So we're... It appears that we're moving a lot of positions from positions that are going to either senior-type positions, right, or promoting. And I don't necessarily have an issue with that. I think, I think if they're doing the work, then we should be classifying them properly and paying them appropriately. So for, well, for instance, we have a mechanic supervisor, and that's, you're asking that to be reclassified from a senior equipment mechanic. So that tells me that they're, they'll have responsibility of overseeing and supervising either people or projects. Is it fair to say that... And you take the IT director out, I understand that, that's a little different, but the rest of them, well, they'll have either more responsibility over projects or people?
That's correct. So for, I would say there's more to it for some positions. So the mechanic supervisor, yes. So the mechanic supervisor would essentially have one person, there's another person in the shop that they would supervise, and then also do more supervision and project management of stuff that's farmed out. The senior building inspector doesn't necessarily have additional supervision duties, but the level of work that current, they've been currently performing is of a senior level, and then it's the ability to do more advanced type work. So the promotions kind of vary depending upon the position, and the duties do, obviously.
I understand that, and I think it's important that we, as policymakers, recognize that we have staff that are essentially, at least from our conversations and then what you've talked about tonight, who have been working at a class to some degree, that we pay them appropriately.
Correct.
And so, okay, I just wanted to ask that.
Okay, and so these are the new personal requests in other funds. So in the Parks and Recreation and the Lighting and Landscape District Funds, we just list the position once because they're allocated across those funds. There's a request to reclass a supervising administrative assistant to the administrative analyst one, and a request for a new administrative assistant position. And this is a new full-time position, but it's, there's currently a part-time person that's fulfilling that. So we're showing this is the, we would eliminate that part-time position in approving the full-time. So there's $30,000 for that request. And then in the Streets and Utility Funds, these are new position requests. There's the Streets Maintenance Supervisor, the two public work maintenance worker one positions, and an electrical technician.
Armando, can you break those two positions down for me? Explain what those are.
Sure. We have our current supervising administrative assistant, Leslie Sheets. She's currently doing work with the Measure Q budget coming in. We have to be able to analyze our projects, go out for grants. Currently, we have nobody within our department that can go out for grants that's within their job description. So she would be doing over and beyond the administrative assistant duties. The making administrative assistant is currently being filled by a 36-hour position. That would be moved to a full-time to assist to backfill some of the duties that Leslie was doing.
And again, this, these numbers don't represent raw, like actual dollar salary or income or pay. This is like the burden, the full-cost burden, right?
Correct.
So for that second one, the additional cost would be $30,000 for the... Okay.
So that includes additional wages and benefits and everything else, costs associated with that position.
So John, I don't know if you're the right person, but can you break down this over here? This is, this is the one I'm most curious about. Can you explain what these four positions are?
Yes. Public work team, we always assess our workload, driven by regulations, new facilities that we have to operate and maintain. Over the last several years, we've seen several, several new development projects come online. All those facilities require ongoing maintenance. Over the next several years, we have a number of large development projects, Liberty Ranch, Elliott Ranch, Summerfield, Greenwood, Parlin Oaks, all moving forward and going to be accepted by the city. A lot of these subdivisions include... by the city. A lot of these subdivisions include new sewer lift stations and new drainage lift stations. That's part of the system that we need to operate and maintain. In addition, on our street side, there are a number of regulatory items that we need to be more proactive in addressing. We don't really do annual fire hydrant and blow-off inspection and tests, and those are mandated by a fire code. We don't do water distribution valve actuation, valve actuation testing and inspection, also mandated by, by fire code, leak detections. We need to be more proactive in that as well. Our sanitary sewer management plan requires we do a complete sewer collection system cleaning every four years, and also do full videoing of our sewer collection every four years. And again, those, the quantities that will also increase as these new development projects move forward. And there is also some storm drain system maintenance as well. So a lot of those activities, we need to be more proactive. We have, the staff we have, we spend a lot of time on our daily service calls, USA requests, water leak investigations, service lateral replacements, a lot of time on shutdowns for non-payment, a lot of emergency on-call stuff, traffic control for city, city functions and events. So this, these new staff members allow us to be more proactive in some of the equipment that we need to maintain per state requirements and then also per fire requirements. And in addition to mentioning regulatory changes, we're a member of the MS4 Permit Group with a number of other agencies in Sacramento County. And the state later this month is expected to release a new version of our draft stormwater permit. And of course, every new version of a permit comes with a lot more responsibilities and expectations and duties without any new revenue source from the state. And so that's another thing that we need to make sure we stay on top of. So these positions in the street maintenance will allow us to tackle these items. And then the, the one electrical technician will allow us to be more proactive and take care of a lot of the infrastructure that's coming online, as well as all the new, when we replace equipment, a lot of it is becoming electrically-driven, electrically-operated. So the electric technician will also assist in maintaining that equipment.
Do you not currently have, like, somebody who is a specific, like, the Public Works electrician? Or is it just more like you have some people who have, you know, some general electrical knowledge, but they're not electricians, so to speak? Or, or which is it?
I will have to double-check, but I believe we are, we have one. And it just is a, a need to increase the number of staff to maintain the infrastructure that we have.
Can you give me a good explanation about the maintenance work? I understand these new projects and I, I get that stuff. I, I think I always struggle with, as I was telling Chris recently, you know, I, I feel like, and I look at things through the lens of the public. I mean, this is always, everything I ever do up here, I always look at, what would the citizens see? What would their, what the optics of them, what do they see? And, and I know unfortunately, what Public Works does, you guys do, is a lot of the stuff you guys do is really important. I mean, everybody's department has something really important. But unfortunately, Public Works is not as, as public-facing as, like Parks and Rec, for example, right? I mean, they see the guys out there mowing grass, blah, blah, whatever. But you guys are like working, you know, on sewer stuff, you're out the treatment plant and stuff. The public doesn't see that kind of stuff. The public only sees a few things, which, you know, if, if there was gonna be a complaint, they would complain about something like, like potholes or something, right? And a lot of you guys' work is obviously on bigger stuff. So when I see stuff like this, I always think, you know, we need to have the people that we need to do the work that's required. And I know your department is very unique in the way that a lot of your stuff is regulated and mandated by blah, blah, blah. Nobody is out there measuring the grass to see how high it has to be cut, whatever. That's a, that's a public perception thing. But you guys are like under a certain thing. So I know that there, we need to get that work done. But I also understand, you know, again, for me, it's always, and I just say this generally, this, this would go for Armando's department, it would go for any department, anybody who's listening right now. For me, it's always a quid pro quo. When I give you guys stuff that you want, because you say you need it, I expect when things need to be done on the other side, that you guys address them quickly. And not that you don't, and not that Armando or anybody doesn't, just, that's just a general statement, that when we grant additional positions on behalf of taxpayer dollars, that the public and my representative of those people expect that things that they want to have attention and get done. Because when you're building City Hall, building positions, adding positions, a lot of people look at that as like, oh, we're just spending more money on whatever. They normally unfortunately don't make the connection that this is something that's helping them, right? There's just, unfortunately, it's not. I have to sit there and go to bat for all you guys' departments all the time. People come in and go, why, do whatever. And I have to like go to bat for you guys. I do it all the time, honestly.
Thank you.
Have to justify, this is what's happening. So I just say that statement. When I look at these positions and hearing your description, I thank you for that. So again, thanks for the, that was very descriptive. And I, and I, I'll give it some thought. And I appreciate, you know, you guys being forward-thinking. Obviously, those projects are not online yet, but they will be soon. And this is a budget into next year. So that's all I have at the moment, Mayor. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other question? All right, the only, my concern, or I just wanna be clarification, you know, the four position is a lot of position in your department. I, I'm not telling you don't need it. You certainly you need it. But the reason these four positions, just basically my statement is, so you increase in your work in your department, or you're just thinking if we have these four positions, you, you can increase the level of service?
It, it's a little of both. Again, going back to the street maintenance team, there's a lot of requirements that we have not been able to stay on top of that are mandated by our sanitary sewer management plan. That's a requirement of the state. And then a lot of our water system maintenance, that's required by fire code. So it really is to help build that staff to be more proactive. Right now, the staff is 100% reactive, and we're not able to get to the maintenance needs that we're actually required to by state code and by fire code.
Thank you. The other thing you mentioned, there is a lot of project is coming in a pipeline. But these position now can help, is right, these project can be in, in, in the process, maybe another year or two year. And you guys also have the authority to go to the third party to doing a lot of work, right?
Yes, to a point. And so we've had some projects come online. We've had Cardoso 1 and 2 that really came online, Catarina, Cedar Flats, Liberty Ranch is under construction, Elliott Ranch just started grading. And so a lot of those projects are gonna have a lot of water mains, sewer mains, storm drain mains, streets, all that stuff that we will need to maintain. And so part of it too is recognizing that these projects are coming, they're under construction, and we want to be ready to make sure we don't fall behind.
Thank you. And you know, my main question, I certainly know you need, need this position. That's not mean I'm not agree with that. But the other hand, this money or public money is not any individual's money. So we wanna make sure public understand when we approve this position. Thank you. I don't have any question. Any council member, any question?
And then I just wanna add, you had a question about the Electrical Technician, and that's a new classification. So we don't have anyone currently working in that. So if we bring that, that'll be another thing is approving that job classification. And the final slide is just a list of the, the new capital projects. So these were listed in the staff report, but we added the, the dollar amounts. So we have the citywide facility keyless entry locks, the civic area master plan, the bridge over the railroad tracks, the Walker Park master plan, which is a little confusing, that was recycling an existing account code that we have. So it's Walker Park-related work, but it's not a master plan for Walker Park. So we'll get that updated with the actual budget adoption. There's the Police Department Master Plan, additional market improvements, flashing beacons at Forest Street, safe streets and roads for all study, the wastewater treatment plant recycle station, the impact fee study, which is 300,000. And we covered the 150,000 dollar increase. So there was some money that was already allocated for that type of item. So only half of the funds for that are a new request. There's Walnut Avenue improvements, Golden Heights system improvements, and the growing control system improvements. We can, if you have any questions about those, we can answer them now or bring back more information.
You know, the one thing on the bridge over, you, can you, might be John, explain what, where we doing and what's that?
Yes, actually, that is a placeholder for a grant project that we're going to be submitting. We're actually working on one now, and then we expect SAICOG on their call for projects later this year. That's a perfect project to submit a grant application for. And what that, that is a bridge over the railroad tracks that would connect the subdivision at Cedar Flat to, I wanna say Trafalgar. And it could also connects trails to multiple parks. What we have now is a trail that stops on each side of the tracks. And UPRR standards require any pad crossing to be an overcrossing. And again, these are the types of projects that SAICOG loves to fund. And so we're, we're very hopeful that we will get funding when we submit the grant applications. And so there may need to be a match as well. So that would be reflective of some of that match. But this is the type of project we're expecting to get mostly grant-funded.
Thank you.
Okay, so I just wanted to clarify. So we'll bring back or distribute some more information about the Measure Q breakdown of the different categories via personnel, MO, capital. And then you wanted some information about the Lighting and Landscape Districts, just the revenue that's coming in from taxes within those districts and the Measure Q contribution?
Yeah, and, and I know it's, it's about two, two and a half million dollars. But it would be nice to see all of that on one page to say, this is what Measure Q is funding, this is what General Fund is funding, here's the additional General Fund, and here's Lighting Landscape. So I can see what we're spending on Parks and Rec. And then also the revenue from the market, because we haven't talked a lot about that tonight, but in the positions we have. But that's yet another probably one and a half million, right?
I believe overall, the market revenue is around two and a half million. I think the, the, the net, once we factor out the, the cost for running the market, it's usually around a million dollars that the market contributes that's available for other Parks and Recreation programs.
Okay.
But we'll get that together for you. And then you wanted a breakdown of items for the line items that had multiple things grouped together. And then is there any other feedback or information you'd like before we bring budget back for adoption? It'll be at the, the next council meeting?
The policy for the discretionary spending too. Anything else on the budget? And maybe this was part of what you just mentioned with the Measure Q, but I just, I'm trying to understand, like, it could just be brief, but what we've, what we've pre-budgeted for the Measure Q dollars moving in through '26, like, maybe some things we approved, I, I don't remember. Because I just, like I said, I'm still struggling with knowing, based on that slide, that we have already earmarked the entire 4.6, whatever, 4.7, by the time we get '26, to stuff already. Or is that just reflecting that we're gonna use it all? But, or, I mean, you get what I'm saying? I don't know if I'm saying it right, but...
Yeah, we can provide a breakdown of what different categories that's going to fund. You can see the expenditure increase that is utilizing that revenue.
Great. Thanks.
Matt, last clarification on General Fund. If you look at '24, '25 is we are in 26,000 deficit, right?
Correct.
And then '25, '26 is 112. That's trend?
No, that's just for different one-time items. Like I mentioned, the, the MOU with the Chamber of Commerce, I think that's roughly $57,000 per fiscal year. And that's using the remaining ARPA funds that, from the, the Business Grant Program. So we've already received those revenues. So that's not, when we add that, it's, it's okay to deficit spend for that, because that's coming out of the reserves. So that's, that's not something that's gonna be utilizing ongoing revenue going forward.
Okay, all right. My, I'm, you know, when you go to the deficit from that year to that year, it's harder.
Yeah, so the other deficit, you know, that's just one example, but it could be like other, like, one-time capital projects. But all of our reoccurring, like, maintenance and operations and personnel are completely funded with our reoccurring revenue.
Thank you.
I, I just had one last question, just popped into my head a minute ago. The money that we set aside for our committees and commissions, I don't know exactly what that is for every single one. But there, I do know that we've had some requests and we've granted some in the past. Is that baked into this?
Yeah, so whatever we've currently budgeted should be in there. So we use the '24 budget as the basis when we made the '25, '26.
Okay.
So it's a status quo budget. So we're presenting, like, these are the additional items on top of, you know, what's already been approved.
Got it. Thank you, Matt. And by the way, great presentation.
Thank you.
And thank you for fielding the questions. Appreciate it.
Luckily, we've, we've got a good finance team that helps me out and...
Are you gonna introduce your, your comrade that does the budget?
Is he still here?
He's not, he's the only one not asleep.
So that's Carlos Solario, our, our Budget and Revenue Manager. He's, he's the one busy. He's oversees the, the budget process and keeps me and all the other departments together and in line. And is also oversees utility billing and finance.
Thank you, Carlos, for what you do.
All right, thank you, Matt, and...
Yeah, I'd just like to have one comment before we close. I really like to thank council for their patience with their rookie manager through the budget process. And certainly like to thank staff, especially Matt and Carlos, for their efforts and work that they've done on the budget. I will tell you, it's not easy. And especially with the rookie city manager that's requesting changes frequently. At, anytime you request a change on it, it adjusts a lot of different things. And it's hard work, and I really appreciate it. Great job.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you. Thank you. Now, if there is no comment, then I'm going to move to the next agenda item, Public Work Department. Subject, Consumers Groundwater Authority Alternate Director Appointment. Mr. Griffin.
As noted in the staff report, the City Council appointed Councilmember Vanderburg as the city's representative for the Consumers Groundwater Authority Board of Directors. And so with Mike's resignation, we need to identify the alternate. And so the item before you tonight is to have a discussion and identify who the alternate should be for Mike's replacement. And recommendation, when we decide who that staff person should be, we identify it by title and not by person, so that we do not need to return at any time in the future for this item.
Your recommendation, staff recommendation is who will be the Public Work Director?
I admit, I should have probably read the staff report a bit closer. That would make the most sense, yes.
So I think in the interim, if we have to appoint somebody tonight to that, I think it should be the Acting Public Works Director.
Agreed.
Of course.
By title only, until which time we have a Public Works Director?
Yes.
For purpose of the motion, it should be Public Works Director, and then it would be assumed that the acting person would...
That's what I was just gonna say.
Yep.
Yeah, let's not make it Acting Public Works Director, because we'll be back in a month.
But I have a question, though. And this is just a formality. But if, if we're only, I'm confused, though. But if we're only saying by title only and not by person's name, if we already say that the Public Works Director is the alternate, then regardless of Mike's selling being gone, wouldn't that still roll over to the acting?
Absolutely.
Why do we need to have a resolution?
Yeah, absolutely. I was thinking if reverse, if the appointment was to make the Acting Public Works Director the appointment, then we'd have to come back.
So that we don't need a policy change, we don't need a resolution then?
We would just need a resolution to make it clear that it's the Public Works Director going forward, whether that's the acting or interim, it would still all qualify.
Okay.
First time we messed up and just did it by name.
Ah, okay. Well, I would like to make a motion then, if there's no questions, to...
As long as there's no public comment.
Sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. We like where you're going, though, John. We already blew the over on... We already blew the over-under. The budget has wormed down, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Any public comment on this agenda item?
No public comment.
All right, now I'm looking to the motion about this agenda item. Go ahead.
Yeah, you want to make the, I'll, you want to make the motion or want me to make it? That we designate the Public Works Director as the alternative for the Consumers Groundwater Authority?
Second.
It's move by council member Farmer, second by council member Papino. Madam Clerk may have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Council member Papino.
Aye.
Council member Farmer.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion passes by 420. Thank you. Next agenda item, communication.
None this evening.
All right, city clerks report.
And none.
Next agenda, comments by staff.
Parks and Rec Director Armando Solis, I think, has a comment.
I do. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Just want to remind you, well, thank my staff for their hard work this last Saturday, for the last Saturday market. Another great job by them. The Summer Concert Series starts this Saturday at Veterans Park, or Veterans Field, from 6 to 8. The KOB Band will be there, they're rock and pop. And then, as you're aware, the Fourth of July Independence Day Parade, the route has been altered due to the construction. That information is starting to go out, and we've had to make some small modifications to the 5K run also, but nothing major to that one. So, and, so that'll be held on Thursday, July 4. And instead of having that Saturday market on the 6th, we will be having it in conjunction with the parade and the 5K out there that day, on the Thursday.
And just a brief update on C Street. I'm sure everybody's seen a lot of equipment out there over the past two weeks. That's my attempt at engineer humor. So I think as Mike mentioned, two weeks ago, the potholing's been completed, and we've determined there's a number of utility conflicts, primarily with PG&E, AT&amp;T, and SMUD, and those need to, those have been identified, and we're working with these utilities to determine how best to resolve them before the next phase of work can begin. And so that effort brings in our contractor, the civil engineer, the geotechnical engineering team, and the construction management team to identify, you know, are there design changes to the roadway section, all the construction processes that are specified in the plans that maybe we can alter to minimize the amount of infrastructure that needs to be relocated. And the reason we do that is, the less we have to relocate, the quicker they get their work done. So just a quick update on, we're continuing to work through that process, and that's why we're not seeing any heavy equipment out there in the last couple of weeks.
Hey, John, just a quick question on that subject, so I don't have to mention it later. I've been asked by some people, is, is the construction schedule been significantly altered? Because we're, you know, we're almost, I think it was around mid, mid-April, we're talking about starting, I think it was April 18th or something, we're like two months, almost two months past now. Are we looking at adding, I mean, is, is this delay going to put us, our schedule off? I mean, it would, right?
Yes and no. The, we worked with the contractor when we started the project to identify some cost-saving measures and ways to better phase, to better phase the project that reduce the overall time of construction. And now we're eating back that time that we gained due to these unforeseen conflicts. So right now, we're probably pretty close to what we had originally identified. We're hoping to have, the, the design engineering team said we'll have answers into this week as far as how do we best tackle these remaining conflicts, and then we can work through scheduling with all the utilities to firm up that, that schedule.
Do you see any problem with, because I know you're at the mercy of utility companies to have them out. Do you see any delays with, like, we're like, you know, you're going to come back and say, well, we've requested SMUD, blah, 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 but there, there's a delay on that or something?
Yes. I don't know the extent. They're already telling us it's going to take them nine months to redesign and reconstruct.
Really? So how does that impact the...
That's what we're working through right now.
Oh, my God. So my last, my next question is, I've also been asked by people, which I couldn't answer is, are we relocating some of the utilities along the C Street quarter that's getting the revamp? There's a lot of still overhead electrical that's on poles and stuff, none of that's changing?
There is no underground proposed with this project.
Okay. So we're not re-changing any of that stuff?
No.
The utility stuff you're talking about, stuff that's, that's...
Currently underground, yeah. I mean, to not get the mention of the weeds, if we were to build the improvements per plan, we'd have PG&E gas mains sticking out of the ground by eight to 10 inches.
Wow, okay.
So those are issues that came up that we're working through with utilities to resolve.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, by comment by council. Vice Mayor Lozano.
Yeah, just a couple of things on, sorry, on the 23rd, I attended a Sacramento Area Vice Mayor luncheon in Citrus Heights. Vice Mayors from Citrus Heights, Folsom, and a little bit about Sacramento County, Roseville were there, and one Placerville County supervisor. And went really well. We're looking to host them down here either next month or July, or this month or July. So I'll keep you updated on that. And that is about it.
Thank you, Matt, Armando, all of you. Mostly, I made Chris answer all those questions yesterday, but I appreciate you guys going through them today. This morning, I went to, I was invited to Lake Canyon Elementary School for their annual color run to lead the Pledge of Allegiance and say a few words on behalf of the city council. If you're not familiar with that event, they've been doing it for, gosh, about 10 years. It started when I was on the school board. And so typical of the color run thing, the kids all have bright white shirts and they run around the track 20 minutes per grade level and get sprayed down with a lot of colors and stuff. But what was neat about it is, I didn't get an exact count, but there had to be about 75 parent volunteers that were out there. And it really turned into a huge community event. And, you know, just, just a phenomenal job. And then seeing that campus, the gardens and stuff that Lisa was talking about, you know, it really just kind of pulls that part of the community together. And I said when I was running for school board, and I still stand by it, that the schools are the most important thing that makes this community what it is. We think we're, you know, doing important stuff and deciding this kind of stuff we talk about here. But really, that's not only creating the citizens' future, but it's pulling families together for events like that. So it was just a, just a really phenomenal event, and they do it again next year toward the end of the year. If anybody has a chance to check it out, just a, just a great event. That's all I have.
Thank you. Council member Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, thank you, Matt, for being able to field our questions and your patience with our, you know, you still were quick to have answers on even stuff that's not your department. So I have a lot of appreciation for that. And thank you, John, for sitting in the hot seat with the public works questions, and Armando, and all the staff for answering, you know, questions chief to your pertinent departments. I appreciate that. Thank you to Jackie and her team for the Saturday market, it was well-attended, nice weather for, for the first time, right? Mother Nature cooperated with us, so it was a good market, it was well-attended, it had, it was a ton of people out there, and I enjoyed it. And I think, last thing is, just in regards to what Kevin said, I agree with you, Kevin. I think school boards, I've often said to friends of mine, I would not trade being on city council for being on a school board. I think that is a job that's very underappreciated, especially during COVID. I would never want to be a school board during that time, during the Lord's work, for sure. That's all I have to say, so everybody have a good evening. Thanks.
Thank you, council member. Myself, thank you for the staff. Thank you for all the staff working hard. Thank you for the public comment. Thank you for everybody come to this council meeting. I did attend some events for last couple of weeks. I attended the Memorial Day on May 27, service honoring our national heroes and their sacrifice. I also attended on May 31st, opening of, grand opening of the car wash, triple crown car wash, congratulations to them and wishing you much success on your business. I also attended Saturday market, it's well-attended, weather was very good. I met council member Farmer. It was good. And last thing, the last, last night, I attended Liberty Ranch High School graduation, and my granddaughter also graduate on the high school. Congratulations to her. And that's all. If nobody have no question, then I'd like to adjourn that meeting at 8:21. Thank you.